Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Wednesday, July 22, 2020. My name is Kim Clark Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter Caleb Wysocki. There will be a public hearing with discussion on policing in Pittsburgh, police reform, and budgeting. Thank you for tuning in. Have a wonderful day.
Good evening and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Wednesday, July 22, 2020. Will the Clerk please read the subject of the hearing?
Tonight's subject is going to be policing in Pittsburgh, police reform, and budgeting.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. For the record, we are joined today by Council members Reverend Burgess, Councilwoman Gross, Councilwoman Strausberger, and Councilman Wilson. And if we have other members joining us, we'll let you know. We will now move on to testimony from our registered speakers. Please give your name and neighborhood for the public record. Each speaker will be given three minutes to address counsel, and then the mic will be shut off automatically. Please be reminded that this is an opportunity for the community to speak directly to counsel about issues at hand, and at a time for counsel to listen. Therefore, counsel will not be responding to individual comments during the public comment, but we may speak after the hearing to make a few comments. And I will say this is the third of our three public hearings regarding policing. And we had one post agenda, and we have a second post agenda scheduled on Monday. And so we hope by the time this is all over, where we all are very well informed and make some decisions that make everyone live peacefully, coexist, and live in a better Pittsburgh. So with that said, well, let me... With our first speaker, Laura Perkins, please come to the mic.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening. Thanks for joining us.
Good evening, thank you. Hi, my name is Laura Perkins. I live in Friendship. I'm the Emergency Response Organizer at Casa San Jose, which is a Latino nonprofit. I'm also a member of the National Lawyers Guild and Pennsylvania Prison Society. I've been a legal observer in Pittsburgh for over a year now. Before that, before I lived in Pittsburgh, I was a human rights observer in Honduras, where unidentified police and military would shoot tear gas canisters straight into people's faces, recorded peaceful protesters' faces in order to later serve them with bogus charges, where snipers would be on top of buildings as peaceful protesters marched by, and where politicians would deny that these things ever happened. I also observed, as I observed these things in Honduras, I thought this would never happen in the United States. But I've witnessed all those things I listed above in the past two months as a legal observer in Pittsburgh. I've seen those actions be taken against our black brothers and sisters while white people with guns were allowed to protest freely. When I'm not doing legal observation, I do emergency casework at Pittsburgh's Casa San Jose. If our people are picked up by police or immigration, I'm there day and night to provide support. I see our undocumented community be put in Allegheny County Jail for minimal charges and get handed over to immigration, where they sit in detention for months. All want a rehab program and counseling would have sufficed. Why is it that I have to be on call for 24/7 to protect our community from the people that are supposed to be protecting them, providing language access that they should be providing, doing community work that is proven to make communities safer? I'm speaking about undocumented folks because that is the community I work with. But it is our black brothers and sisters, our trans, non-binary, queer, disabled, and homeless brothers and sisters that are disproportionately targeted by Pittsburgh police, the police whose union covers up murders and domestic violence like it's their job. Social workers, school counselors, court advocates, and teachers, we are doing the work of the government. Fund us. I don't know of any social workers that have shot an unarmed teenager dead, though we have been in comparably dangerous situations. Regarding the proposal "Stop the Violence Fund", 5% to 10% of a policing budget is a joke. Think of all the lives that have been lost by suicide at Allegheny County Jail unnecessarily. Are you telling me that 5% of the budget will fix this? When we say "defund the police and invest in black communities", this is not even close to what we are talking about. Lastly, there is a clear issue with budget transparency in Pittsburgh. We need many more community input hearings like these, where the public can examine the capital and operating budgets and have real conversations about priorities and racial justice and equity in the reallocation of funds. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to discussing these issues further at similar events.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us. Ikunahana?
That's what I'm here for.
So, geez.
Same thing to you. Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. Thank you for joining us.
Okay, wonderful. Greetings of peace. My title is Ikunahana How Makina, the Grand Inca of the Intercoa Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And for those of you who are not familiar with the Aborigines, we are the Indians, the indigenous people of the Americas. And justice in America will not be served until honor and respect is given to us Aboriginal indigenous people of the Americas. So when you envision justice, envision giving the rights to our land back, the rights to our resources back. You cannot talk about building buildings and building permits and houses and structures that are on indigenous land. And policing in America? Policing started as a result of slave owners oppressing indigenous people who had been mislabeled Negro blacks and coloreds and African Americans, thanks be it to Walter Ashby Plecker in 1912. Because the history of America, or the Europeans in America, has been written and covered in many journals, such as the Enbanzaro, such as the journals of William Penn, who described the dark tones of the skin of the people who so-called "discovered" here, along with the false discovery claimed by Christopher Columbus. Okay, until we start talking about that and putting that on the agenda, re-appropriating land back to the indigenous people of America, you will continue to have these same problems. These same deals will be repeated and continuously repeated until the honor and respect is given to the indigenous people of America. And so I stand firm in stating to you, just as eloquently as "The Folly of Colonization", written by Frederick Douglass in 1894, "The earth will shudder until respect is given to the indigenous people of America." And I urge you to put that on your agenda because only when you deal with all of the dirty history that America has, will you be able to fix a lot of the problems that exist, not only in Pittsburgh, but throughout this nation. We will not go away. We will not be silent anymore. We will keep showing up and being put on this agenda until you stop pause and honor the rightful heirs to this land, known as America. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Ever Resnick Day?
Hello, I'm Eva. Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks for joining us.
Yes, thanks for having me. So my name is Eva. I live in Free Janet Square, Wilkinsburg Border, 15221. I am here because I see a historic moment for change to reckon and face head-on hundreds of years of abuse. And I don't see our leaders in Pittsburgh fully meeting the call of the moment. We are reckoning with hundreds of years of slavery, abuse, Jim Crow, dehumanization, and the criminalization of black people. And today, we are talking about the police. The police who were created in the South to institutionalize slave catching, who in the North were built with the express purpose to protect businesses and not people, as the state sanctioned Union busters that broke up strikes right here in our region and called those strikes riots from anarchists, which sounds familiar to today. The police who actively worked with and had deep intertwined networks with the KKK. The police who continue to target and kill our black community members all across the country in almost every single city. How is it that the city wants to think of themselves as progressive current... That the city that thinks of themselves as progressive currently allocates almost 20% of our operating budget to that body of people? How is it that we continue to have leaders talk about the police with that history, with those roots, as protectors of our community? Our city continues to be ranked the worst place to live for black women in the country, covered in national newspapers, while we watch a lot of our local elected officials post and brag about how we're drawing in tech companies before posting about how we're pushing out longtime black residents. We need to root out the rot from its core and to be creative and widen our horizons about what we can create in its place right now. It's not going to be easy, but if we were serious about righting that wrong, I'd hear us all here advocating today to disband the police, like Minneapolis. I'd hear us proposing to defund the Pittsburgh Police Budget by 50% or more and reallocate those funds for social services, housing, education, mental health care, and more, like the Seattle City Council has done. Having these hearings and the legislation coming up next week is definitely a first step. My urge is for you all to think more creatively and radically when you're thinking right now. The Stop the Violence Fund, it's a start, but 5% to 10% cut, where the community doesn't even have a say of where that's going to be invested, isn't it? It needs to go to housing, living wage jobs, education, health care, and other measures that ensure a dignified life for every single resident. The hiring freeze is important. Duty to intervene is important. I just want to just add that I think we can be doing more and really reimagining what our city looks like in this moment. And thank you all for stepping up to the plate.
Thank you. Diane Powell? Ms. Powell, are you with us? Good to our next speaker, Dawn Plummer.
Hi there. I'm here. Good evening. Thank you so much for holding this public hearing. My name is Dawn Plummer. I'm a resident of Point Breeze. I serve as the Executive Director of the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council, whose office is in Garfield. Today, I wanted to share testimony on behalf of over 100 food, public health, and farm stakeholders throughout our region who come together through the Food Policy Council to build a just, equitable, and sustainable food system for all. You might wonder what policing has to do with food systems. For the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council, defunding police presents an opportunity to invest in more of our city's capital and operating budgets into communities that have suffered historic disinvestment, particularly our city's black communities. Many of these communities are also impacted by food apartheid, meaning that whole communities are geographically and economically isolated from healthy food options. Communities need investments in basic needs that ensure a dignified life for every resident. That includes homes, living wage jobs, education, community centers, and transportation. This also includes investments in our city's food environment and food infrastructure. Defunding the police means that we try to... We stop trying to manage problems of poverty through policing, but rather move swiftly to end it. We must reimagine what we mean by public safety. We must ask ourselves, what do I need to feel safe? And then structure our budgets and invest in our communities accordingly. Members of our Food Policy Council are leading efforts across Pittsburgh and the region to launch and sustain food businesses, grow community gardens, steward vacant lots, and build urban farms. They teach our young people where food comes from and what it means to be equipped with the tools to feed ourselves. Our members rescue food waste and serve nutritious meals to kids, families, and seniors who rely on them. Each of these pieces of our city's food infrastructure would benefit from increased public investment. As life-sustaining essential workers, we also know that many of our PFPC members and neighbors will increasingly face the crushing impact of the pandemic on our health, jobs, families, and businesses. They need this investment today, not down the road. The PFPC recently concluded a two-year Greater Pittsburgh Food Action Plan Project, which outlines 150 different strategies, many of which require some form of public investment from local, state, and federal government that will deliver on the human right to food in Pittsburgh. The time to act is now. We call on the administration and city council to work diligently to increase transparency and community collaboration through hearings just like this, where the public can look closely at budgets and have real conversations about spending priorities and racial equity in the reallocation of our city's funds. The PFPC is committed to this work and looks forward to working with local government and you all to guarantee that our public budgets meet the pressing needs of our residents and invest in our collective future in a positive way. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking. Kate Fissell? Kate?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, thanks.
Let me take the project now in case I misspell, pronounce anyone's name. Please just correct me when you come to the podium. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. My name is Kate Fissell, and I live in Ridgefield Square, 15221. I am asking you today to deeply reimagine community security in Pittsburgh. A truly inclusive safety system will significantly revise the culture, structure, and financing of the police department. It will see every 911 call as first a medical, mental health, or social crisis, not a law enforcement problem. It will recognize the root causes of social breakdown and invest in black minority and underserved communities. It will make this a safe and livable city for everyone. The severe injustices in current policing are getting personal for me. My nephew graduated from the Baltimore School for the Arts. On June 28, his high school classmate Jade Cote died in West Palm Beach, Florida. Jade was of African-American and Latinx descent. She had a medical emergency due to a drug overdose. When the police arrived, they allegedly did not administer Narcan and did not expedite transport to a hospital. Instead, they questioned her racial identity, yanked her from her vehicle hitting her head on the ground, and blocked neighbors from transporting her to the hospital. Jade died on the ground. At some point after her death, officers alleged to have lifted her shirt and made a lewd comment. My nephew and his friends are grieving the tragic unjust death of their classmate. As a person of color, my nephew no longer feels it is safe to call 911. You may say that was West Palm Beach, not Pittsburgh, but you would be mistaken. It is Florida, it is Baltimore, it is Pittsburgh, it is Minneapolis, Cleveland, Texas, St. Louis, New York, Louisville, Los Angeles. It is my family. It is America. But the piece we have to fix is Pittsburgh. Who's city? Our city. Whose responsibility? Our responsibility. Fifty years ago, the black community in Pittsburgh had the genius and need to create one of the first ambulance services in this country. I am calling on you to follow that example and create a new emergency response system in Pittsburgh. Specifically, more than duty to intervene laws or eradicate the need to intervene in the actions of the Pittsburgh police officer. Increase black and minority enrollment in the police force. Revisit the residency requirement. Invest in city schools so that city employees want to live in Pittsburgh. Get the data on police firearm discharge stops and use of physical force. Use that data to investigate patterns of racial discrimination and eliminate them. Stop the militarization of the police force by restricting the purchase of military equipment. Give emergency medical personnel incident commander status on legal jurisdiction and life-threatening medical emergencies. Prioritize and fully fund youth diversion programs to break the school-to-prison pipeline. As city council members, I feel you have the power and the moral responsibility to correct the deeply flawed public safety system. I urge you to act before our hearts are broken again. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Sun?
Hi, can folks hear me?
Yes, thanks for joining us.
Um, my name is Daniel Sun. I use they/them pronouns. I live in Bloomfield. And I demand that we defund the police and that we stop the station. The police budget has increased every year for the last five years under Paduto's administration. It is now $115 million. In 2014, it was $76 million. It is now $115 million. It is a 50% increase, and it is unacceptable. The city of Pittsburgh does not have a shortage of police. If you look at the protest photos, the gear they have, the equipment they have, what they come prepared to treat protesters, it's really easy to see how all this money is used to protect property and to physically harm protesters. This budget is a humanitarian disaster. If you compare these numbers to the Housing Opportunity Fund, that gets $10 million a year. In 2016, the Affordable Housing Task Force reported that the city of Pittsburgh has an affordability gap of 17,000-plus units per household earning 50% of the city's median household income. So we have a shortage in housing. We do not have a shortage in policing, yet we still think it's a good idea to give $115 million to the police, 10 times more than we're putting in the Affordable Housing Fund a year. Think about what we can do with $115 million. If we built affordable homes, do you think that everyone might be better off? Do you think that we might be better off if we put $115 million into the hands of black people, black children, black disabled people, black poor people, black trans people, black parents, black teachers, and so on, and so on? We can even use this money, thanks to testimony from an earlier person, to give indigenous lands back. That sounds like a great idea to me, too. And now, the city wants to use this bloated public safety budget to renovate the Zone 5 fire station into a public safety station in East Liberty. Why? Why we need more cops in East Liberty? Was gentrification just not enough? Now you want to use police violence and incarceration to tear black people out of there? You want to build a police station right next to the site of Penn Plaza in Burgess? I know you're listening, so you need to do something about this. Tell me how ignorant and negligent you have to be to think that this is a good idea. And tell me how hateful you have to be to tell the press that you're thinking about it, like Paduto did last Monday. Meanwhile, we know that there is an RFP submission deadline for this station project, and it has already passed. People have already applied for this money. So Paduto's just trying to hide it. I just demand we stop the station. I demand we defund the police, and I demand the refunding of the people's peace and the people's needs. I yield my time.
Thank you. Donna Gray? Donna Gray? Okay, I don't see Donna Gray, so we'll move on to Joseph Garvey.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, thank you. All right, hello, thank you for allowing me to speak today at this hearing. My name is Joseph Garvey, and I'll be living in Shady Side, 15206, next month. I consider myself a proud Pittsburgher. I'm a graduate of Carnegie Mellon University, and I'm also an incoming medical student to the University of Pittsburgh School of Medicine. I've lived in Pittsburgh for several years and will continue to live here for the foreseeable future as I complete my degree. Though I've never before spoken at hearings like this, given the recent outcry for police reform following the public murder of George Floyd, and as a future Pittsburgh-trained physician, I feel compelled to speak today and to add my voice to the vast number of other voices in both the city of Pittsburgh and the country to implore my legislators and representatives to begin taking measures, to not only address police reform, but to also create systems in the city that are transparent and directly benefit the health and safety of fellow Pittsburghers, especially those who have been historically marginalized. To that end, I want to talk about the budget. This year, the Pittsburgh operating budget was approximately $608 million. The Bureau of Police was allocated 18.9% of that budget. And as the previous person mentioned, that is $115 million. This is the second highest allocation in the operating budget, followed only by the Department of Finance. The money allocated to the offices of Environmental Services, Equity, Operations, Emergency Medical Services, Mobility and Infrastructure, and Public Safety, combined, do not equal the amount of money allocated to the Bureau of Police and the operating budget. Will prioritizing law enforcement over all of these other departments in the budget improve the health and safety of Pittsburgh residents? I'm not convinced. I also want to point out that unlike the city capital budget, there do not seem to be regularly scheduled public forums on the city's operating budget. I'll not pretend to understand the minutia of politics and budget creation in Pittsburgh. I'll gladly leave that to those who are more qualified and experienced. However, I do want to ask everyone in this meeting, and especially those of you who are sitting on the city council, if you think the budget priorities and processes that have been laid out this past year truly reflect the priorities of the city. Rather than allocating money to the police or police review boards, let's work to make Pittsburgh better by creating budgets that reflect our actual priorities. So I ask two things. First, that our priority not simply be reforming the police, but rather addressing the basic needs of the city, especially those of historically marginalized groups, by funding departments that can actually address them. As a future medical professional, I want to make sure that the city that trains me is also fully protecting to the best of its ability the public health interests of all of its residents. And second, I ask that we make public budget hearings like this one a norm so that Pittsburghers can have an active voice in how their money is being spent in their city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Thea Young? Thea Young? Kimberly Ellis?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Kimberly Ellis, and I'm a proud resident of the Historic Hill District, and I'm a special faculty at Carnegie Mellon University. I'm also the founder of the Historic Hill Institute for the Historic Preservation of our neighborhood. For this particular set of legislation, I'm against passing it because the amount is far too low, and five years of implementation for such a low amount is far too long. We need to be really serious about discussing defending, defunding the police, and reimagining public safety. I would like for you all to review the budget, Pittsburgh's budget, from before the police purchased armored vehicles, flash bomb grenades, and eliminate that amount and prevent any further purchases of military equipment from the 1033 Defense Department program. We sent over $7 billion worth of excess military equipment to over 8,000 local law enforcement agencies. We're not at war against our own citizens and regular police equipment can do. We need to also re-implement the qualification that police officers need to live within the city limits. I grew up on community policing, and it is a proven method that works. And it works because police officers tend to know the people in the community. Further, the FBI released a study showcasing that white supremacists had infiltrated police departments across the country. Pittsburgh needs to investigate and review the history of their officers and have immediate dismissal for any ties to a white supremacist organization, from membership to close affiliation. And finally, I had a quick conversation with some police officers as I was setting up food distribution for Operation Drop of Food drop around the city, and I was specifically thanked for the work that I thought was obvious, but even one commander said that the food was really needed in the community. Without him needing to say it, I knew and he knew that he meant that the allocation of food resources was in and of itself a form of crime prevention. So it's really important for us to take a serious look at this historical moment and to defund major levels of the police immediately, especially those that had already been inflated from years ago. And we need to reallocate resources to food, housing, shelter, and our education. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kimberly Ellis? No, we had Kim. Deanna Stanley?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. I'm Deanna Stanley. I am a resident of the North Side. I'm the founder of Transuniting, so Translet Organization here in Pittsburgh. I'm also a business owner. I have a catering company, Mad D's Sweets. Um, I come to you today because I've been out here on the front lines, a lot of these demonstrations out here on the streets. I haven't seen none of you out there. You come out there, you see how these police react to us, how they're talking to us. A commanding officer caught me a nigger and told me to back up. These are things that are happening on the lines, the front lines out here as we demonstrate for our rights to exist. There's no money need for those cops at all whatsoever. No more police stations at all whatsoever. The money needs to go to homeless shelters and building economic wealth in our community, in our black communities. An shame on every black person on this council because you know how hard it is as a black person, you know. And you sit here and you let these folks run through us like we are nothing. I'm a trans woman. I have seven citations plus charges when these cops are only supposed to come and only block off the streets. But they're coming in, they're giving us charges for us out here fighting for our rights to exist as people. for us out here fighting for our rights to exist as people and for our liberation. No more money needs to be funded to the police. No more. And shame on every single one of you Black folks on this council, because the white folks don't care about us. I am on the Zoom call, and I'm looking at every last one of you. No one cares. I yield my time.
Mary Crossley? Mary Crossley?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for joining.
Yes, um, good evening. I'm a resident of Squirrel Hill and a congregant at Six Presbyterian Church on the corner of Forbes and Murray. I'm also a professor at the University of Pittsburgh School of Law, where I served as dean from 2005 to 2012. My area of expertise is health law and public health law, with a particular focus on health disparities. I am a white woman, and these days, I'm often an angry white woman. I am angry because my son was shot in the back and wounded by rubber bullets, shot by law enforcement when he was exercising his constitutional rights at a peaceful protest in support of Black Lives Matter earlier this summer in Pittsburgh. I'm angry that Black and Brown Pittsburghers don't enjoy the much-touted livability coming from Pittsburgh's new economy. We know from the 2019 Gender Equity Commission report that Pittsburgh is statistically one of the worst cities for Black people, and particularly Black women, to live in. And I'm angry to think that a single cent of the taxes that I pay could ever go to purchasing military equipment for police, who've shown themselves to be more concerned about protecting white people's property than Black people's safety. So I'm here to speak strongly in favor of prohibiting the city's acquisition of military equipment or weaponry. Our neighborhoods are not war zones, and police officers should not be treating our people like wartime enemies. Further militarization of our police force is the very last thing we need to make our community more just and therefore more peaceful. I also want to address the proposed Stop the Violence Fund. It's a start, but as others have said, it's not enough. We need to be, think bigger and faster. 10% is not enough, and five years is too long. Council has already enacted an ordinance declaring racism to be a public health threat in Pittsburgh, but framing the current effort as "stopping the violence" does not reflect a public health approach. Neighborhood violence is a symptom of the deeper pathology of structural racism in Pittsburgh. A public health approach would focus directly on the root causes of that pathology by investing in education, living wage jobs, affordable housing, and equitable healthcare. Investments in economic justice are anti-violence measures. This week, we've been mourning the passing of John Lewis. One of this fearless and faithful man's most memorable quotes was from his speech at the 1963 March on Washington, when he said, "To those who have said, 'Be patient and wait,' we have long said that we cannot be patient. We do not want our freedom gradually. We want to be free now." People who want to see a more just and equitable Pittsburgh do not want to wait any longer. We want a meaningful investment of resources now to accomplish systemic changes with the full engagement of and leadership by community members. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabrielle Gray?
Good evening, City Council Representatives. My name is Gabrielle Gray, District 9, Homewood Russian Community. I pray everyone is safe and in good health. It is my concern that council is pouring unnecessary funds into public safety to remedy issues that are systemic of poor resident education, lack of communication, and a need for more transparent and accountable leadership. Recently, council authorized the city controller to transfer $250,000 from the Pittsburgh Police Budget to the Stop the Violence Fund that I am glad has been held for further discussion. However, I want to address the resolution council unanimously authorized to accept a $100,000 grant from the Hillman Foundation to fund Pittsburgh's Group Violence Intervention Program, provided by police in Operation Better Block in Homewood. Regarding the Hillman-funded Group Violence Intervention Program, I have many questions before implementing what appears to be a police-driven strategy throughout a city that is currently experiencing strained resident-police relations. Because there has been a severe lack of communication, transparency, and engagement with Pittsburgh residents regarding the implementation of the GVI strategy, I would feel comfortable if I had more information on the program. I found in brief that the aim of GVI is to reduce peer dynamics in the group that promote violence by creating collective accountability to foster internal social pressure that deters violence, to establish clear community standards against violence, to offer group members an honorable exit from committing acts of violence. It is my large concern that GVI is a re-engineered form of racial profiling that does not need to be reintroduced into our community. Racial profiling is a toxic public safety strategy that has been the largest contributor to the violent resident-police relations we are experiencing today. The unseen psychological and socioeconomic impact of reintroducing racial profiling through GVI strategies will have severe impact on our communities, and in particular, predominantly low-income and minority communities within the city of Pittsburgh that will be greater, or that will result in greater violence than the city has ever experienced before. Additionally, I am concerned that Operation Better Block in Homewood has been selected as the organization to receive the $100,000 to implement GVI strategies with Pittsburgh police. It is alarming that Operation Better Block has been selected without any public record of GVI experience being made available to residents. I am also concerned that Operation Better Block has been selected not by residents, yet by city council, as the most qualified organizational candidate to implement GVI strategies throughout the city of Pittsburgh. And I'm presuming the pilot program will be in the Homewood Russian Community, since that is where Operation Better Block is. There are too many questions about GVI that remain unanswered to the community and myself.
Thank you. Kim Brown?
I choose not to speak at this moment. I just chimed in. I hung up on another appointment.
So you're not going to speak tonight?
Hello?
Yes. Who is this?
Kim chose not to speak. She's off.
Okay, Susan Hausman? Thank you, Madam Chair.
I didn't request to speak tonight, but thank you for the offer.
Thank you. Michelle Kenny? Michelle Kenny?
She's not on.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because she's the mom of Antoine Rose, so I just want to make sure. We'll come back, just in case. James Bryant? James Bryant? I don't see James Bryant. We're going to go to Kim Wilson, Williams? Kim Williams?
I'm in.
Not there?
No.
Birdie Radford? Birdie Radford? Fernando Soriano?
Hi, hello.
Hi.
Thank you for having these council meetings again. There are just a few things I wanted to reiterate based off of, again, what I've been hearing from a lot of different people in the community. I'm sure that you've been hearing-
State your name and neighborhood.
... friendship that I'm sure that you have been hearing as well. Sorry, I didn't say that at the beginning.
Thank you, that's okay.
But I think that we're going in circles here. You know, a lot of the experts, a lot of the community members who have been living here and share these marginalized identities and are part of all of these community groups have been saying the same things. We need to address these community disparities and issues at the source, and adding more funds and resources to police doesn't help to do that. The other day, I heard from a variety of different council members after the public had given, there, say, during the meeting, Burgess was talking about passing practical legislation. Councilmember Coghill wants to have an ongoing dialogue and discussion with police. But something that I was particularly drawn to was what Councilmember Strasburger was talking about in terms of carrying this energy, all of this information, what has been brought to the council in terms of actual budgeting. The budget should be informed by evidence-based decisions, first and foremost, and there should be a lot of clarity and input from the community at the same level that has been occurring for these conversations about police budgeting reforms and so forth. But again, I would like to reiterate that we need to address these issues where they stem from. Adding more police to communities doesn't reduce crime. It just increases the criminalization and issues relating to police brutality. The evidence has been made very clear thus far that what we need to do is invest more in our social services and work together as a community to address issues of poverty, to address issues of violence and so forth where they come from. Aristotle had remarked once that poverty is the parent of revolution and crime. You cannot expect peace without justice. And on that point, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Cho?
Hi, yes, my name is Nikki Cho. Hi, yes, I'm currently in the Beachview area where I learned Councilman Coghill is from and has recently brought up, bought up some properties on Broadway, tried to beautify the neighborhood. That's another thing that I think we can use with the reallocation of these police funds. Instead of continuing to send money, what I learned today, $115 million to the police budget or military artillery to use against peaceful protesters, we can reallocate that fund back into neighborhoods of diversity and reverse the effects of gentrification that have rampaged this entire city. I do want to go and take a look at a couple of the items that you guys are taking note of. The Stop the Violence Fund, the 10%, five years. I mean, it's really just a slap in the face. I feel at this point in time, in the climate, there's no room to tell Black people to wait any longer, to be protected, to be respected, to be valued, to receive justice, and you are taking away all four of those things by continuing to fund this police system who has killed a 17-year-old Antoine Rose II, June 19, 2018, on the day of our independence, which has also taken the life of Mark Daniels from Homewood, who has also used their funds to brutalize Black women like Melanie Carter. This administration, particularly in Pittsburgh, is so corrupt and unjust. If any more money goes into them, it essentially will wipe out the remaining Black and people of color living in this city through gentrification, through police brutality, through unwarranted arrests, through no-knock arrests, through all types of destabilization efforts that have been thwarted upon us, not just recently, but over the past 400 years in this country. I feel like it's time for Pittsburgh City Council, specifically, to not pass this bill. It's just ridiculous. It's a slap in the face. As a Black woman, as a Black activist, I call myself that because I feel like I have to fight for my people first. And I, it's funny, I'm sorry, I have to stop here and address this this entire time of this hearing. Bobby Wilson, you look extremely-
It was a timeout, I guess. Rachel Williams?
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks for being here.
Hello, good evening. Thank you so much for hearing me this evening. I am a resident of the Friendship Area, so, hi, Deborah Gross. This is wonderful to see you. I really thank you all for being here. Just to give you a little bit of a background, I'm a licensed professional counselor in the state of Pennsylvania. I got my graduate degree at Carlo University, and so I am a proud resident of being in Pittsburgh. I'm really concerned about the situation with police violence that's occurring in our country. We have a long history of systemic racism that has led to this situation, but I wanted to get to some of the key points of why we're here today and to represent, using my voice, that I stand with, you know, that 10% of the police budget being reallocated to community funding is not enough. Using a timeline of five years for that allocation is way too long. We need to invest in our communities, and we need to invest in programs that provide food, access to jobs, transportation. We know all of these things. As a licensed professional counselor, I have a lot of training in human behavior, and I'm also well-experienced in the phrase of bias. If all of the council people have not done some experience in their bias work, I encourage you to understand that word, bias, and implicit bias. If you want to actually go to the Harvard University's implicit bias page, you can simply Google that, and you can take a quick test, which will give you a little bit of a background of how much implicit bias you have. I took the test myself, and as a white person, I do have implicit bias that shapes my experience. My experiences with police have always been really positive. They've always been overwhelmingly positive. That's what shaped my worldview. But my experience and my personal positive view of police is not the issue. What the issue is, is that people in the Black community are obviously affected by the choices and the budgetary decisions that you make. We have a choice now to reallocate funds to community programs that will positively affect people's lives. I really hope that you take this opportunity to take a really deep, hard look at how you see people, the way that you've been shaped, the behaviors that you have towards other people, and how that's going to really impact this entire community. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Meyer Hoke?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thanks for joining us.
Hi, thank you. My name is Mahir Hawk, and I'm a resident of Mount Washington, 15211. Thanks for allowing me the opportunity to speak today on the topic of governance and the police budget. Although the city appears to be taking all too tentative steps forward, understand that for many of us, this is only the beginning. This isn't a moment, it's a movement. I was disappointed to see that some council members did not seem to be paying full attention during recent meetings. And even Councilmember Strasburger mentioned yesterday that not all these meetings have had enough attendance by council members. I think my council member is Bruce Kraus, and I don't know where he is right now. Be assured that we will be coming for your jobs if you do not change the way the business in this city is conducted. U.S. council members will continue to feel the heat until real change comes to Pittsburgh. I'm also joined by my fellow Pittsburgh resident, Rachel Fenegworth, who cannot speak tonight, and I quote, "in support for guaranteeing community involvement in the determination of where and how to distribute the 250K being placed into the Stop the Violence Fund from the Pittsburgh Police Department budget. A series of town halls needs to be set up in the communities outlined in the bill that will be receiving this first round of money. These town halls need to be advertised extensively, including flyers and door-to-door invites, and not only on social media or the internet. There needs to be an outdoor meeting set up for any community member who does not have access to the internet who does not have access to the internet or devices provided to enable them to attend an online meeting. This should become common practice as meetings continue to be held virtually, especially should the limits on gatherings continue into the fall budget setting season. These accommodations should continue even past any type of COVID-related restrictions on gatherings. In addition, the amounts of money being taken from the police budget in the first place and the percentage increase set up for the next five years is not enough, and it's too slow. 250K out of a budget of $115 million, 10% in 10 years? That's not good enough. The police department can no longer hold such a large percentage of the city's budget. A more substantial cut needs to be made, with funds being redistributed into communities immediately, while the voices and opinions of community members are making the decisions every step of the way." I just want to also note that within the police budget, they have allocated $3,000 for cheese balls. That, no, that's not good enough. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you. Levon Ritter? Levon? Okay, and let's see, Levon, move on to Jeff Ritter? Jeff Ritter?
Yes, hi. Thank you. I am thrilled to hear such incredibly well-informed people giving you such incredible testimony. You know, this is an asset for the city. These people who, and they're much more well-informed than I am on all these topics. And it's very, very impressive, and I hope that the city council will use this as an asset to help you make these decisions. I know they're complicated. I know that most people are not informed, much less informed than I am even. And use these people who are informed, who are passionate about these topics to help you make these decisions. And I know it's difficult. I'll tell you, the most important thing that I've been thinking about most recently is that the president is probably planning on sending more of these unmarked federal, they're not officers, they're not troops, I don't know what they are, but I bet you Pittsburgh is on the list to have them. And we should be prepared for this, and I hope the city council is prepared to make sure that this doesn't happen. It would be a big shame, it would be chaotic, it would be, it's a deliberate instigation, and I really hope it doesn't happen. So thank you for your time. I appreciate you being here. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Elena Beagle?
Hello?
Beagle?
Hi, yeah. Eliana, yep. So I'm Eliana Beagle. I'm a student at the Graduate School of Public and International Affairs at Pitt, and I live in Friendship. So, you know, it seems like a lot of the speakers are on the same page. I similarly oppose the Stop the Violence Fund. We need community input first before we can decide where that money would go. And I support the ordinances that would create a duty to intervene, would ban the acquisition of military equipment, and which would put in place a hiring freeze. In particular, though, I want to speak about the duty to intervene ordinance. Essentially, it relies on officers to hold each other accountable. So while I support it, I'm also not sure how we're supposed to trust that it'll actually do anything. I was one of the protesters attacked by riot police on June 1st in East Liberty. I was shot in the back of the calf while running away from tear gas. I saw a man who had been shot in the face with a rubber bullet bleed and cry on the ground of a parking structure. I watched helplessly as police continued to shoot at us and throw tear gas, even as we screamed to them that we needed a medic. And that night, as I iced my injured leg, I watched the chief of police and the mayor hold a press conference swearing that officers had only used sub-bombs. I'm a 5'1" white girl from the suburbs. If we're going by stereotypes, I'm about the least intimidated person you could imagine. But when I stand with black activists affirming their right to exist, I apparently become a threat to public safety too. How could I possibly trust the police after that? Oh, is my time up? How could I possibly trust the police after that? How could anyone feel safe knowing that our police have no problem using chemical weapons against citizens and then lying about it? But on just anecdotal evidence, I decided to look at the use of force policy that the Pittsburgh police use. Specifically, I wanted to look at neck restraints because that's how Derek Chauvin murdered George Floyd. The official policy states PBP personnel are not authorized to use neck restraints or similar control techniques, which have the potential for serious injury, unless involved in a deadly force encounter. So I decided to look at whether or not neck restraints are actually being used. Now, this policy was put into place in 2015. From 2010 to 2015, there were about three neck restraints per year. After the policy was introduced in 2015, still an average of three neck restraints per year. So it doesn't appear that that policy actually did anything. And frankly, there should be zero. So while I support the duty to intervene ordinance, I want to make it very, very clear that in practice, it's going to be mostly symbolic. The PBP is clearly as interested in holding itself accountable. So you, the legislators, and we, the people, will have to do it for them. We must...
Josh Eisendfeld? Josh Eisendfeld? Eisenfeld? I'll spell it just in case I'm mistaken. E-I-S-E-N-F-E-L-D? Sadie Tress? Therese?
Josh is there. He's muted.
He's just muted?
Yes.
Josh, could you, I'm sorry, Sadie, could you please wait? Josh, could you unmute yourself so we can hear you?
Okay. You can come back to us.
Hey, we'll come back. Sadie, I'm sorry, would you go ahead, and then we'll come back to Josh.
Sure. I'm Sadie Therese, a resident of the Marshall Shadland neighborhood. And as many others have stated, I am frankly appalled that Pittsburgh can be named one of the most livable cities in the country while at the same time being one of the worst cities for black Americans and other people of color. There are three things that I want to touch on. One, I would like to reiterate the earlier proposal that all current and prospective officers be vetted for connections to white supremacy or paramilitary organizations, and that should be an automatic disqualification. I would like to again say that 10% is not enough for the Stop the Violence Fund. It honestly sounds like barely enough to cover the additional bureaucracy that it's likely to create. And it doesn't address the root issues of the problems. A much bigger investment is needed. But I really want to focus mostly on expressing support for the ban on the acquisition of military equipment by the police department. I reject the characterization of our neighborhoods as war zones and of protesters as terrorists and of black teenagers as criminals. I worked downtown and have witnessed police gallop their horses at groups of black teenagers, halting them just short of contact. If they feel justified in using that type of intimidation technique on a group of teens, or at worst, loitering, what will they do with the military equipment? I honestly thought that that was the thing of the speculative fiction and sci-fi novels that I read until learning that our present police force is trained with Israeli military and that we have these large military vehicles and other weaponry in our city already. And I'm ashamed that I'm just now learning that and paying enough attention to know that. I really urge that we take large amounts of money to move from a first response of police force to a first response of crisis management, recognizing the humanity of our citizens and treating them as such. I recommend investing that money in public health and social workers and addiction specialists to treat the real problems instead of criminalizing health and mental illness issues. Instead, can we create safe places for teens to socialize instead of trying to erase them from the field division of corporate Pittsburgh downtown? Can we create spaces for community to work together and build?
Thank you. Gabrielle Monroe? Gabrielle Monroe, Gabrielle Monroe? Hi. Hello. Good evening.
Can you hear me okay?
Now we can, yes.
Okay. Hi there.
Hi.
Gabrielle Monroe She-Her, Mount Washington. "On my honor, I will never betray my integrity, my character, or the public trust. I will always have the courage to hold myself and others accountable for our actions. I will always maintain the highest ethical standards and uphold the values of community and the agency I serve. This is the law enforcement oath of honor. Our police have shown, when you militarize them, our police want a war. We are militarizing our police to go to war with our own members of community. Defund the police and invest in community. The police have betrayed public trust and used tactics that are against the rules of war on nonviolent folks expressing their right to protest or their right to trade sex in exchange for money. The police have lost their courage to hold themselves accountable. In 2018, at a local ACLU event, a former Pittsburgh police officer shared how police raped sex workers during arrest and then bragged about the level of sexual assault they achieved in their inter-agency reports. Sexual assault and rape are not ethical standards, and our police should be held accountable for this abuse. Whereas the SWAT team has undergone significant changes in the past few years, police officers have not been held accountable for the brutalization and targeting of my community, the sex worker community here in Pittsburgh. Defund the police where you can. Defunding the police includes defunding the police to brutalize sex workers, ban diversionary programs, their coercion into services. This is conversion therapy, forced and threatened via arrest. Police should never be the gatekeepers of resources for the communities they have brutalized. Police should not be the gatekeepers of resources for anybody. If folks want saved, they should be able to walk into resource centers and choose from a list of resources that support and fit their specific needs. Remove funding for police and invest in communities. Listen to folks with lived experiences. Sex workers do not want, need, or desire to be saved or brutalized by the police any longer here in Pittsburgh. This is unacceptable treatment of sex workers. This is unacceptable treatment of human beings. We want you to defund the police, fund black leaders, fund black trans leaders, fund black trans sex worker leaders, fund sex worker leaders, and support state-level decriminalization of prostitution and all related offenses, as this is a moralistic law that is none of the business. So please, write your state lawmakers as county council people...
Thank you. Carmen Brown? Carmen Brown?
I could tell you what she was gonna say.
She's gone. Okay.
You can't hear me?
No. Now we can.
Oh, okay. I thought, okay, I thought you were gonna play that Nivelle thing that he played earlier. Okay, Carmen Brown from the Knight Council District. I wanted to...
First of all, you're only better than that. But go ahead.
Okay. Anyway, okay, Burgess, your housing legislation was one of the biggest cause of institutional racism. Your housing model of displaced residents was created when you gave free rein to the developers to price out renters and mom-and-pop businesses. Due to Burgess's close relationship with the mayor, this housing model became a trickle-down effect throughout the city of Pittsburgh. Burgess knows that low-income residents do not have the qualifying income to afford his new development, and he never included any provisions in his development plan to help the most vulnerable in his district. Burgess' housing model is a contributing factor to the systemic racism that is occurring in the city of Pittsburgh. As far as the Stop the Violence Fund created by Burgess, this has, this has never, there has never been any reports, deliverables, or any other mechanism to see how money was spent, which was $500,000 that was given to this fund in 2018. As a resident of Pittsburgh, I am suggesting that a fund be created by Pittsburgh residents. Grassroots residents should be chosen from each district to create this ballot prevention fund. This way, it would give an opportunity for funding to be distributed evenly. Also, there should be an automatic process of transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Randall Taylor?
You can hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, good. Good evening, council. I want to speak about several issues around policing. And I think the most important thing that I think you should be gratified this evening that people are coming out and they're speaking, which means in their minds, this institution has credibility of the city council. And as we are questioning institutional policing, if the city council continues to go down the road where they're doing things that maybe are not as transparent as they should be, or some could be construed as maybe trying to mislead the public, then in time, this institution of the city council of Pittsburgh will come into question as well. And so I speak about that, to talk about, first, Stop the Station East Liberty. I think the community needs to get a full explanation as to why that decision has been made, a decision which the community had no idea was being made. And we asked, why is this happening after 13 years? We're talking, oh, the building in Washington Boulevard has a flooding issue. Some talk about, oh, the rent is too high from the state. Yet nobody's given a definitive answer. And we hear from the mayor, we hear, well, it's not really happening, even though RFPs have been gone out and people have replied to those RFPs. Same as the woman earlier caller mentioned about the Operation Better Block receiving $100,000 for work that they have no background or history at all in doing. The same with the Stop the Violence Fund, which anybody knows is not enough. I think you should also ask questions as people talk about the funding of the city, of the police, a 50% increase since 2014. As we know, the crime has gone down in this city, and no one has questioned anything. And so, you know, we're talking about, again, you know, reimagining how we do police. And I think that we should honestly begin to work, you know, cooperatively with people around this budget and around different things. And finally, I'll say, I think no better example is the former Veteran Administration VA hospital property up at the top of Howland Drive, which was sold to the city for a dollar, and it was turned over to police. It is a unique, amazing part of the city, 154 acres. And it couldn't be imagined that we could have maybe put a park there, maybe a concert stage there. Maybe it could have been something, it could have been a real asset to this city, yet quietly was turned over to the police to do tactical training or whatever they're doing up there, because we have simply no idea what's going on up there. A 50% increase in the public safety budget in the city of Pittsburgh at the same time crime is dropping? We have a real problem, council. Let's try to solve it together in Pittsburgh. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Dolores Sands? Is Dolores on? Okay. Sarah Shrek? Shrek? Sarah?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Shirk. My pronouns are she and her. And I stay in Bloomfield, 15224. Hello, Councilperson Gross. Thank you, Randy Taylor. Thank you, everyone who has spoken before me. I call in this evening to support defunding the police. I'm also just learning about this now, that the proposal is to reduce the bloated $115 million budget, $115 million budget by a pitiful 5% to 10% over the next five years. That's unacceptable. I also echo the demands that others have made before me, that there needs to be community input into how that money is directed. One, it should be more than 5% to 10%. Let's start with, I don't know, 50, 60, 70, 80. You get the idea. But second, community input and transparency is important. As Randall Taylor spoke regarding... As Randall Taylor spoke regarding the credibility of the city council, if this is really going to be money that serves the community, then you need to consult the community. Personally, a major need that comes to my mind, especially in terms of promoting the safety and well-being of Black and Brown citizens of Pittsburgh, is what can the city do to combat the spread of the coronavirus pandemic, which is disproportionately killing Black people in this country? I echo everything that previous speakers said about redirecting the funding into addressing the root causes of violence and crime in the city, or, as others have explained it, addressing systemic racism. This includes, but is not limited to, safe and affordable housing, equitable healthcare, improving access to healthy food, and, you know, safety, education, and recreation programs, especially as the coronavirus pandemic continues. On July 3rd, I stood with my fellow protesters chanting Black Trans Lives Matter, and I stuck my dirty finger in my eye and tore out my contact lens and threw it on the ground. Why? Because Pittsburgh police were approaching with batons and tear gas. Militarizing the police is unacceptable. The bloated police budget is unacceptable. Not having community input into how the money that needs to support and protect citizens of Pittsburgh is spent is unacceptable. I hope-
Is that it? Monica Thomas? Monica Thomas? No, Monica Thomas. Gabby Warner?
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thanks for joining us.
Thank you. I live in the Pittsburgh neighborhood of Highland Park and have done harm reduction work around sex work and housing, and am currently involved in frontline harm reduction work with folks who use drugs here in Pittsburgh. Both in that work and in my personal circles, I talk to individuals regularly who have negative interactions with police that result in charges and fines that often push them further into poverty and precarity. One individual, a senior, who is experiencing homelessness, was awoken by police while sleeping in the hallway of an apartment building, and they were jailed after police found paraphernalia with their belongings. This person was never offered housing support. Instead, a senior Black man without housing was left with a court date, a fine, and no support. Instead, they came to a community organization to receive support. So why do we keep investing in a system that is so clearly linked to trauma while simultaneously giving very little resources to community organizations rooted in racial justice and mutual aid that we know work? Why do we keep investing in a system that our Black and Indigenous neighbors are and have been telling us has been harming them for generations? I'm calling on you to do something different today, to imagine a Pittsburgh with less, or preferably no, police, and more Black-led, community geared resources. Think about the possibilities that could exist if there were less barriers set up by law enforcement and more pathways made by frontline community healthcare workers. That is what defunding the police can do. Defunding the police means investing our capital in operating funds in Black communities and the things people really need: homes, living wage jobs, education, and the needs that ensure a dignified life for every single resident, the structures of society that really keep people safe and cared for. This is possible. Another way is possible. We don't need more investment in the police. We need investment in our communities. Those two are not the same thing. Please choose the latter. Defund the police. Black lives matter. I yield my time.
Thank you. Geo Maroon?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, how are you?
Hey, good. My name is Geo Maroon. I live in South Squirrel Hill 15217. And I'm here to just encourage council to take the steps that actually fit the massive scope of the problem we're facing, rather than relying on small incremental change in the face of centuries of damage to Black communities and working-class communities. Measure 406 to ban acquisition of military equipment is a good step that I think the council should take. However, as many other speakers have said, the other measures don't do nearly enough. We do need to reallocate funding from policing toward community services, but the community has to play a central part in determining what that funding actually does. And the measures around the Stop the Violence Fund don't provide for that community input. Activists, and particularly Black activists, have been organizing around issues like affordable housing in Pittsburgh for years. They've done this, especially as affordable housing here disappears with very little action from city government or the mayor. These community members know what their communities need, and their voices must be at the center of this process through participatory budgeting that truly reflects what the people need. And as other speakers mentioned earlier, residents from different parts of the city should be allowed to play a central role in determining where those funds go. And as others have said, 10% is not enough. Five years is too long with a budget of $115 million. Activists had to scratch and claw just to get $10 million into the Housing Opportunity Fund. Imagine if we made it as easy to get money for affordable housing as it is to get money for police. I myself grew up in a pretty affluent white suburb of Pittsburgh. My friends and I never worried about run-ins with the police outside of maybe speeding tickets, and this wasn't because my community was inherently peaceful or inherently safe. It was because communities like mine are not overpoliced for small issues the way the Black communities are. And it was also because people had what they needed: stable housing, stable employment, decently funded public education, community services. So much of crime has its roots in poverty. So much of research has shown again and again that making communities safer means giving people what they need to live. And any fund that truly aims to stop violence must include access to stable, affordable housing, employment, education, and healthcare. Council has the power to make bold, creative changes here, and in doing so, you must put community members at the center of those conversations as we decide how to move forward as we defund police and invest in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa Kettering? Vanessa?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, now we can, thank you.
All right. My name is Vanessa Kettering. I live in Morningside. I work with the Mathis Factory and the Union Project, Project Art. And I also substitute at Fox Chapel, and I have worked at other schools in the Pittsburgh area. And so, I've worked with Black and white students. But I really want to talk about how there's something that happens to Black students about middle school, where you can just see how they're afraid if they're even going to have a future. I have seen this. There's a hope for students, but there's also a fear. They live in communities that are patrolled by police. And I'm doing everything I can to give students in Pittsburgh, you know, a love of art and a love of beautiful things. But I know that this is also their lives. I would like to talk about the 10% budget cut. 10% just puts it back to where it was last year. And so if you are able to increase the budget that much in one year, you should be able to decrease the budget that much in one year, not five. That is just nothing. Remember, we are not asking the police to do more with less, but we are asking them to do less with less. They are in places that they don't need to be. They're in situations they don't need to be, and they are harmful when they are there. I have been in a classroom where I called for a school counselor to come help me with a student, and the police officer, the school police officer, is what came. And he took this Black student out of the classroom in an elementary school. And that happens all over Pittsburgh. And that starts a cycle, an expectation for that student. And it is heartbreaking to see that happen. We absolutely need to change the way we are funding our police and the expectations that what they are doing with everyone. We really need more funding for our education. I've been to multiple schools. I see the disparity amongst these schools. This needs to change. We need to do better as a city. I yield my time.
Thank you. Susan Hadbadney from Mount Washington? Susan? Are you there? Nope. I was surprised you were listening, okay. Brandy Fisher?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. You did a good job bringing in a lot of people up.
Thank you, which means I don't have to say everything everyone just said. They did a good job as well. I want to, I had a lot that I thought I was going to say, but after listening to everyone, I would like to just ask. First, I don't know what happened with Nikki Jo. Her time was cut short. I don't know if that was accidental or who's in charge of that, but she was actually speaking for only two minutes and one second. I've been timing everyone. And so, I don't know what happened with that. Second-
I'm just gonna say, please don't start her time. I'm just gonna say that the time is being kept by our IMP department away from all of us, so.
Okay. I just wanted to note that. And also, you know, it's very, it is telling, and I don't want to make assumptions. But, you know, watching your facial expressions, especially Councilman Wilson, when certain things are said. You know, people are, you know, I just, I don't know if you can see yourself. You know, I've done a lot of talk shows, and I often watch myself afterwards to learn my facial expressions and how I see. But it can be very off-putting to people and upsetting when some of the facial expressions that are seen or certain statements being made. And it's been a little consistent over the course of the hearing. And so I just wanted to be, I wanted to, you know, point that out, because it made me feel some type of way. And I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out publicly. As elected officials, maybe we should practice, you know, a poker face or something, unless we're showing empathy. And then, lastly, I wanted to highlight, you know, you heard a lot today. And I just want to ask that it doesn't sound like a broken record. Does it, that it doesn't sound like the same old same old, and that you are allowing this to not only enter your ears, but your hearts. People do not take the time to sit and wait a half an hour, 45 minutes, an hour to speak to you because they have nothing else to do. That this is a very important matter to a lot of people, and I hope you take it as seriously. The legislation the people have spoken on, that's who you've been elected to represent. I don't know if we don't trust people, and we just, and we think that they're just, they don't know what they're talking about, that if they knew, they would say something different. But I would say it's the opposite. I would say that we all don't share the same lived experience. And sometimes when things make us uncomfortable, it's because we've never experienced it, but it doesn't mean it's not reality for very many people. And so I would ask that you step outside of your own selves, your own experience, and really listen to what you heard and move on that. The people would like to say where this money needs to go in their community. It is a great idea to defund the police, to reallocate funds to make Anthony Coghill feel better. It is a great idea to transfer money from something that we see is harming people for something that we wanted to believe in, but evidence has shown us is not working. No matter who our friends are, no matter who the FOP is that you like and is telling you to do the opposite. The people have spoken, and you have a duty to listen to them. And then they have a duty to elect people that do listen to them. And so, we need change. We need change now. And we need to stop this overreliance on incarceration, a penal system, and start really thinking about people. You heard from a diverse array of people from all walks of life, from different professions, all saying the same thing. Behoove you, it will behoove you to listen to them. That is all I have to say. And thank you, Councilwoman Teresa Kell Smith, very much so, for providing what people have been-
Cut her off. Thanks, Brandy.
Extra minute, give her an extra minute.
If I could control it, I would. Kelsey Friedel? Friedel?
Hello?
Hi, how are you?
Hi, good, thank you. I'm Kelsey Friedel. I live in Greenfield, Pittsburgh. First of all, thank you. I would like to also point out something that I think we've all been kind of seeing during this public hearing. The community members of this city can see when the council members smirk and laugh at our passionate appeals to you. And I would just like to say that some of it has been very disrespectful. For some of us, this is our only way to make change, and this is also the reason that we continue to protest, because we are being mocked and we are not being heard. There are nine council members, and there have been anywhere between four to seven of you on at the time here right now. And this is about our lives and the community's lives, and it is a matter of our life and death. So please, listen to us. With that being said, I would like to kind of echo what literally everyone who has spoken has said. Please, defund the police. 10% of the police budget reallocating is not enough, especially over five years. That is way too long. We need to reinvest in the community, and economic justice is a step towards anti-violence and anti-racist community and society. And justice will happen if we stop treating these problems of poverty and systemic racism with police. They are not trained to handle those issues. I encourage you all to fully reimagine your definition of public safety so that it does not exclude Black and Brown folks that are disproportionately affected by the police. You know, we, people have already talked about it, things that we need to invest in: housing, education, higher wages, and so many other things. As far as the funding legislation goes, the Stop the Violence Fund, I mean, the funds go to vague anti-violence propositions at this point, and it's just not enough. You know, it doesn't need to be reformed. Eventually, hopefully, we are all pushing for abolishment of the police. At least, I am. Duty to intervene. As I said before, we must dismantle the structure of the policing itself for this to work. It doesn't hold any officers accountable. I mean, this was in place and in effect when George Floyd was murdered. So that just goes to show you how well it works. We must create legislation focused on systemic change. I support the ban on military equipment.
Time's up. Thank you. And I'm just gonna say, if anybody has any written statements that they'd like to submit to council, I'm gonna give you an email address at the end to the clerk's office so that they can share those written comments with us. Christopher Juring?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good evening.
I'd like to start just by saying good job and thank you to everyone else who has spoken so far. I don't know if you've noticed, but every single person, as far as I can tell today, yesterday, and Saturday, has been calling to tell you that they are dissatisfied with your proposed actions. It's not enough. You know, I want to echo everything that everyone's demanded so far. Defund the police, the Stop the Violence Fund is nowhere near enough. Not to mention the fact that the legislation does not actually guarantee that that money would come from the policing or public safety budget, just that the amount should equal 5% of the policing budget. So that's a problem. Duty to intervene, yeah, that should not be allowed, but as someone just before me said, this rule was in place in Minneapolis, and look what happened there. Banning acquisition of military equipment, I hope you do. I hope you take a step further and make sure that the police don't have any military equipment and that they just can't- I hope you take a step further and make sure that the police don't have any military equipment and that they just can't not acquire it. I was at the protest on June first. I was shot with four rubber bullets while following the dispersal order given by the police. Those events and, and this city's inaction and response is inspiring a wave of young people to get more involved in local politics, and that's a great thing, but it might not be a good thing for you all. You need to listen to your constituents and, and show some respect. People have mentioned it, the facial expressions, we can see you. This is all recorded, it goes on YouTube afterwards. Councilwoman Coghill, I don't want to be disrespectful, but how many glasses of wine have you had? Why did you have to get up during the middle of a black trans woman's impassioned testimony? That was disrespectful. Councilwoman Strasburger and Councilwoman Gross, thank you for actually paying attention. Bobby Wilson, I know you've gotten a lot of criticism today, but you were elected because people did not like Darlene Harris. If you want to keep your job and have future jobs in Pittsburgh, you need to do what people are actually asking you to do. We are watching you, and you will not get away with two plus reforms, BS performative actions, and inaction. Madam President, Councilwoman Smith, I appreciate that you have been listening and putting on these public hearings. I'd like to say that after all these meetings, it seems that those of you with comments, some of you have not learned anything. Councilwoman, you said on Saturday that we need to hear from the FOP on these issues. We do not need to hear from the FOP on these issues.
Is that it? Thank you. Jessica Fuquay? Jessica?
He's there. She may be having trouble with her audio, but she's there.
I do see her.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. Okay.
No, that's okay. Thank you for being here.
I would like to just, I'm just really proud of everyone who's speaking about this, of who's come to this meeting. I'm from, I live in the Friendship neighborhood of Pittsburgh. I'm here to echo everyone's comments to defund the police as a step towards abolishment, abolition. And some of you on the council might be hearing that and might think, well, that's just crazy, or that's just out of the question. And I really want you to, after listening to all the testimony today and in the past weeks, to really challenge yourself, to ask and ask yourself, why, why do I hold on to this idea of the police as protectors? Why? Challenge yourselves as council members, as people who are put, put in power to serve us. Why there is resistance around this idea? This idea is not new, although it might be new to you, it is not a new idea. It has existed since the abolitionist movement to abolish slavery. And people who are involved in abolishing slavery, after slavery ended, their struggle didn't end. Their struggle continued. And what we know is that the police are legacies of slavery, and we're literally born to enforce the properties, the property of white men. And at that time, enslaved black people were property. So that, that is who the police protect and serve fundamentally. You can't reform that. So notions about duty to serve or reformist, reformist attempts are the, is what is actually pie in the sky. Abolition isn't pie in the sky, but expecting that five percent by five years, that that's going to prevent another Antoine Rose, that's some pie in the sky bullshit. Really ask yourselves, am I okay with five percent in the next five years? When we have people who had to get facial reconstructive surgery because of rubber bullets shot in their face? I am, I fear for my life when I go out to protests, not because of the people who go. I'm afraid of what the police are going to do. Because this council has not taken any action to immediately remove their less lethal munitions, which we know are not actually less lethal. They kill people. As we know that the Allegheny County Council failed to approve a bill that would have banned less lethal munitions. I'm just gonna call them full lethal munitions, because that's what they are. And the county council did voted no against that. So I'm asking you, city council members, to take immediate action. Yes, this, this budget hearing is a great start. I'm, I'm grateful for this, but we.
Thank you. Bridget Purdue? And then I'm just gonna call just one more time, just to make sure she's not here, is Michelle Kenny? I wanna make sure she's not here. Okay, that exhauster list of registered speakers.
I'm pointing out, Madam President, Bridget Purdue is raising her hand in the comment section. I don't know if there was an audio issue.
I think a couple of people were having problems with the audio. I think they have not downloaded maybe the up, the most up-to-date version of Zoom. So I think there's three or four people that I got a message from that, you know, their name was called, but they couldn't, we couldn't hear them. So I don't know what to tell them.
So can we get, I don't want to cut some, end this without giving them the chance. We just double check with David. While you're double checking with David, I'll just go over a couple of things. I want to be, to feel like they weren't heard. Let's see, we'll hear from council members after we check, make sure that there's.
They're saying he's, there's nothing he can do on his end. It's gonna be the use of their device or whatever.
Okay.
And there's nothing he can do.
Okay. We'll try to figure something out to make sure that we get to hear from them. Maybe we can ask if they could submit their comments in writing to council, and I apologize for whatever the, the issue is. With that said, we'll, we'll turn it over to council. I will say that we had a preliminary vote today on these bills. We have another post agenda, and we have, and then we'll have the final vote on Tuesday. So we'll get to have one more bit of information before the final vote. And with that said, I'm gonna call on members. I'm gonna start with Reverend Burgess, since this is his legislation, if he has anything to say.
Thank you, Madam President. We are grateful for those who have come out and spoke. I said something this morning, I will say it again. I, I appreciate the passion of the speakers. But oftentimes, we as legislators, we cannot just do what's passionate. We have to do what's legal and appropriate. And so we have to, so, for instance, the former VA site was given to the city, but it can only be used for public safety services. So even if we wanted to put, you know, a recreation center there, unfortunately, the covenant that the federal government gave us restricted the use. And so there, there's just things we cannot do. And again, as I said, that if you want me to go further, I am willing to go further in terms of legislation and advocacy, but it has to be legal and practical. And if you can come up with something legal and practical, I'll introduce it and argue with, with it. I, I think the advocates have done a great job in bringing this conversation to the forefront, and I have tried to the best of my ability to embody some sense of their priorities and give the council a way to have this conversation. And I also want to appreciate that I appreciate the way we've had the conversations, counsel. I was particularly moved by Councilwoman Gross's testimony this morning. I have spent my entire, and I probably didn't say it then, I'm not sure why. You know, I've, I've lost so many people in my council district. The reason I ran for council in, almost at first, is I had a young man in my church who was shot and killed. And I had so many deaths in the community that I was doing, I just couldn't take it. And so the reason that I probably know so much about this issue was out of necessity, not out of desire. Just had to learn it because it was what's, it was killing my community. I'm grateful that those numbers are down, but let's work together to see what we can do. It's gonna be a long conversation, right? It's not just gonna be this week or next week. We're really talking about year, two, three, four, five-year conversation about the future of policing looks like in the city. And with the future of black communities look like in the city. And so I look forward to being with you part of that time to have this conversation. Again, thank you, Madam President. I think it's excellent for you to have hosted these public hearings and post agendas. And I, I have, I have, I'm grateful. I'm, I'm talking too much, but I'm grateful for the community's insight and participation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. And then we'll go with Councilwoman Gross.
There we go. As always, it's, it's so important to hear the voice of our citizens directly, and I think it's even valuable for them to hear each other. And I really appreciate this year's legislative and budget season because I'm finding the public is so incredibly well-informed and is reading legislation early on in the process, sometimes even before we've discussed it. They're calling in when it's just being firsthanded in as a new paper and also really digging into this budget. I think this is gonna be a great budget season as we work on the budget for 2021. A few of our speakers mentioned the Stop the Violence Fund as a ten percent reduction. It is not a reduction. So I just, we said that this morning very clearly in our council session where we discussed it. I think one caller tonight pointed that out, and I am no Katie Porter, but I tried to scribble out what that means. So if we, if we kept the budget at a hundred and fifteen million, and next year the match would be five percent, that's just a little over five million dollars would be added to the Stop the Violence Fund, but not reduced. So it wouldn't be going from, let's say, a hundred and fifteen million down to a hundred million for this, for the police budget. If we kept the police budget the same, it would still be a hundred and fifteen million. It's just that the Stop the Violence Fund will skip five million. If we kept the bud, police budget at a hundred and fifteen million by 2026, it would be a ten percent additional. And so that adds up to like a hundred and twenty-six million. If, but it doesn't stop us from doubling the police budget. Like in five years, if we doubled the police budget to two hundred million, this legislation would just allocate twenty million dollars into the Stop the Violence Fund, and then the total expenditure would be two hundred and twenty million. So we still haven't even begun the talk about reducing the police budget. There's nothing in front of council about that. And so I just wanted people to understand that. It's really, I think it's important, but we did hear also, we'll recommend again, the post agenda. We can't put things in the link. The post agenda that council hosted, organized by President Smith last week, was really excellent in kind of giving the high-level overview of different perspectives. And I'll use them on a kind of range of like just doing some reforms to increasing significant funds into social services and things like the violence prevention, but then also other people who were advocating for these more core root causes that we heard a lot of people testifying about today, that Brandy Fisher was on the post agenda last week and talked about really addressing those core basic needs of people, of housing, of, of food, of education, of healthcare. But we also have to act with the capacity and the budgets that we have as the city. There are other bodies of government who have the duty and the budgets to provide some of those services, like mental health services. And we talked about that in last week's post agenda. So I would refer you, Madam Clerk, I think you should be able to find it on the city council webpage somehow. You don't have to sign off a link, but as long, I think if I refer people to our city council page, can they find links to the recent agendas and things like that? I think, I'm not great on YouTube, not as, not as good as my kids are, but if you, there's now like a city, a Pittsburgh YouTube channel.
Yeah.
And that also the link to those post agendas should be organized there and be public hearings and things by date. So I can refer you to that. So thank you for coming out tonight. I definitely took lots of notes, and we do, I think, have the opportunity to build a budget that reflects the people's budget. Okay, have a good night.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Strasburger?
Thank you, Madam President, and thanks for holding us tonight. Wow, thank you to everyone who came out this evening and spoke and offered public comment. For some of you that might have been more courageous than others, if this was your first time doing that, especially on Zoom. And thank you for holding us accountable, because that's what we need. We represent you, we serve you, and, and we need you to hold us accountable when we're not meeting our, what we were elected to do. So thank you. I, I, I heard a lot that I had heard before or that I had read before that I, you know, I found myself, if I wasn't actually nodding my head, I, you can imagine me nodding my head at what I was hearing, especially the need to get to the root causes of public, of violence and of, of challenges and troubles in, in our communities. And I heard a lot of, I heard the word reimagining or reimagined a lot tonight, which I love because we can reimagine what our police look like. We can also reimagine what public safety means to us, is public safety policing? Not necessarily, public safety can be equivalent to public health and to security and feeling that, that everyone has access to food and shelter and clean water and clean air and education. And so, yes, we do need to prioritize those issues in the 2021 budget. We are just about to go into August recess, and then just right after that, the budget season for council will, will begin pretty quickly after. And that is when we can really reimagine what the budget process looks like, just like Councilwoman Gross said. We can, we have an opportunity this year, both with sort of the different ways that we're, we're interacting with the public right now. But as one, as one member of the public spoke today about, we have to do more than just, I think, the same old, same old type, type of budget hearings that involve directors coming to us presenting their operating budgets, maybe a few council members asking questions, and then it's over. I think we really need to think about how this can involve the public more, how this can involve public voices more, and how we can craft a budget that reflects our values for 2021. So what we're seeing in the, in the budget this year was the result of last fall's work. What we'll see 2021 will be the result of this fall's work. And I'm really looking forward to, to that process and to, to crafting this and to figuring out what we can do. Because, you know, the, I, I realize that this is not what we were meant to talk about today. We're meant to talk about Reverend Burgess's bills, which I do support, but I, I acknowledge, just like I know he acknowledges, that they are just a start. They're not the end. This is just a very, very beginning. So they are not going to be a panacea. They are not going to solve all of our root cause issues, and we have a lot more work to do, certainly. I want to say that we also haven't yet discussed issues that are, that really have been brought up a lot, but haven't been addressed in any of the legislation yet, like hiring qualifications for police. We don't have the power to take discipline, unfortunately. And I'd be happy to talk to anyone about, about that. We have some sort of power through this, the CPRB process, but, you know, oftentimes when we try to discipline or fire police, it is, it is halted by the arbitration process, and that needs to change at the state level. So I hope you'll contact your state legislators about that. But we also haven't talked about, as someone mentioned, the less lethal weapons, crowds, de-escalation techniques. So that's something I'm eager to, to get into and to address. And I, I hope that you continue to raise your voices at the city level, at the county level, at the state level, at the federal level, because it's my firm belief that, you know, this conversation is, is related. Because it's my firm belief that, you know, this conversation is related to a whole set of other issues, but criminal justice more broadly. And we as legislators need to work with legislators at different levels of government for an overall approach to this issue. But I think that, you know, we also need to continue to educate everyone, the world out there, that, you know, where the power lies on various issues. So I would be happy to have that conversation with anyone at any point. Thank you again for coming out. Thank you, Madam President, for hosting this.
Thank you. Thank you for attending every one of the meetings, too. I just want to say that. And we have Councilman Coghill?
Thank you, Madam President. So I just want to say a couple of things. First of all, I'm very proud of the way this council has handled this situation. I really enjoy listening to all the callers and the public hearings. I enjoyed our post agenda. I'm looking forward to our next one. It's been very educational for me, you know? I feel like I come in with an open mind. I know that many people out there have, you know, accused me of being pro-police, and I am pro-police, and I'm proud of it, you know, I, for, for lots of reasons. And when we hear about defunding the police and things like that, you know, I just feel like, you know, we need to come into this with an open mind on both sides. And Brandy, if you're still on, I've been trying to reach out to you. I really want to talk to Brandy Fisher. But I did want to recall, a fellow from my neighborhood called me, and he said, "Oh, I was so disappointed to hear you speak good about the Pittsburgh police." And don't get me wrong, okay? What happened on June 1st, something went wrong, okay? I'm the first to admit it. Things could have been done better. You know, whether it was somebody that acted when they shouldn't have acted, whether it was the escape route for people when they started to run, there were things wrong there, no, no question about it. What I try to stress is, overall, our police are very good people. And they're just trying to do the best job that they can. So, so with that, the fellow called me from the neighborhood. He said, you know, he was so disappointed in me. And by the time we, and we talked for probably a half an hour, and we were meeting on the same grounds. And, you know, he understood how we need to respect the Pittsburgh police and police officers all over, and we need to talk about it. I come over with an open mind. I appreciate all the callers. I feel like I've learned a lot through this process. And, you know, to the other gentleman who, you know, about, about my glass of wine, yes, I have a glass of wine, and I enjoy it. It's, you know, I do it every night, so I make no apologies for it, but it doesn't diminish the seriousness of this conversation for me. And that's why I've tuned in to every post agenda, every public hearing that we've had, to learn. So with that, Madam President, I think you've been doing a great job. Continue doing what you're doing, and I think we're going to be proud of our results in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. And then we have Councilman Wilson?
Yes. Thanks for all the speakers that came. I know there were a couple of comments about my facial expressions. Honestly, I thought maybe I was making too mean of a face. But if for some reason that I was smiling or, you know, making some other gesture that wasn't appropriate at the time when people were speaking, I truly apologize. Anyone that knows me knows the seriousness that I take, how serious I take these issues. And in fact, you know, my intentions are to feel exactly what individuals are speaking about tonight. And so I've made my best effort last year around this time to go to places where there were crime. And so for instance, I visited a place where there was still a gunshot through a window at Northview Heights. And it really struck me because the gunshot was still there two weeks after. And this was the, the day right after I went to a historic community where they were banned, they were, they weren't going to allow any windows to have aluminum cladding on the backside of the houses. So here I found myself in Northview Heights. There was still, you know, the gunshot was through the window, and there was, the hole was still existing on the wall. And they had their, their children there. And, you know, whenever I further looked into it, there really is no communication after some of this trauma that happens. So I just want to say that I do take this very seriously. And I looked into that very thoroughly and made sure that wall was covered up as soon as possible, because that is trauma, and that is not something that a child needs to have going forward for the rest of their life. So with that said, I apologize.
Thank you, Councilman Wilson. There are no other members, right?
No, I think that's...
Is that everyone? Okay, so I make sure I got everyone. And I'm just going to thank all the speakers for coming down. I want to thank Brandy Fisher for doing a really great job of making sure she got a lot of people out to speak. And I really wanted, when I started down this road, I really wanted to hear from all sides. And so I'm first going to say, I think that we do need to hear from all sides. And that includes the FOP. Because if we don't have everyone at the table, someone's going to say, the process was tainted, there was nobody, somebody didn't have their opportunity to have their side heard. We made decisions without knowing, fully knowing. This way, we're going to go into this knowing everything that we can about this legislation. And I do want to thank Reverend Burgess, because he has done a great job of working with everyone to try to get to a place where people felt comfortable and he could get some of this stuff passed. And I think this is just a beginning. And I abstained today from all the votes, because I do want to hear from the public. And I hope that we can come, come up with something that incorporates some of the ideas that the public would like to see. But I do want to say, when you talk about, and I would say this, of the faces council members make and, or don't make, and the things we do behind the scenes. All these members came to almost every one of these hearings, and so they do care. But they, they've, you know, these hearings are not mandatory, but they, they care enough to be here, and they cared enough to stay through. And they were actually excited when they heard that there was a lot of speakers. I mean, it actually makes people feel better to hear a lot than it doesn't, than just to hear a few. So I know that they value hearing from you, and they value your comments. And I got to be honest, for 61 years, I've been trying to change my face. It is what it is. I mean, sometimes, I remember one time somebody yelled at me and said, "You're over this..." I mean, I was like ready to cry. I was, I was ready to cry for them. I wasn't smirking. I was trying to hold back my tears. I'm thinking, well, you totally read my face wrong. So I think that sometimes, you know, it's easy to guess and, and, and think that you know what people are thinking. But that's where these kinds of conversations are important. Because we should all probably go to Anthony Coghill's house for a glass of wine and have these conversations instead of, you know, doing some of the things that we're doing, you know, talking at one another, guessing what we're doing, thinking that we know what, how people feel. I tell people all the time, I think everybody thinks the FOP is my biggest supporter, but they didn't endorse me the last time I ran. And so I, it's, that's not the case. I mean, it has nothing to do with the rank and file at all, or with the, with the leadership. It had, it was just that particular FOP at the time didn't endorse me. And so I'll just say that, but you make, people could make those assumptions, is what I'll say. And sometimes it's just not right, so, or not accurate. But I do want to say, we, we did sit through a five-hour meeting today, too. And so I think that, you know, a lot of us are probably just, you know, exhausted, but at the same time so concerned and trying to figure out what we can do. It's, time is coming up for our break, and we're trying to figure out what we can do before the break, so that people felt like that we did something immediate, so had made some, took some immediate action. But I think we also want to make sure our actions are right. And that's what I think is concerning most of us, is that we want to make sure we're doing something right for the entire city of Pittsburgh. And so with that said, I'm just saying we're going to have a policing, our last post agenda would be on Monday at 10:00 AM. And we will hear from the police that, that work the streets, not from the administration side. I mean, they may be here. And we'll hear, still hear from some additional activists. And we'll try to hear some things and hopefully come up with something that we can all peacefully coexist. And with that said, if there's nothing else from members, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'm moved.
Thank you all for being here. Meeting's adjourned.